Miller?
Ojehowski?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Mugrower?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Six present.
And Deputy Mayor Mugrower will lead us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. Mayor decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got two proclamations this evening. And the first one, I'd like to invite our clerk down to the front so we can celebrate National Clerk's Week.
How's she gonna take minutes while you do this?
Thank you, Jesse. Whereas the time honored role that professional municipal clerks play in local government and election administration is critical to the endurance and prosperity of our state. And whereas our state's 1,854 professional municipal clerks strive to always be impartial in handling their official duties, guided by the overarching goal of providing equal treatment to all Wisconsinites regardless of political affiliation. And whereas among numerous vital responsibilities, professional municipal clerks serve as the official record keepers of their respective municipalities and are tasked with ensuring transparency and communication between the governing bodies they represent and the folks they serve. And whereas professional municipal clerks provide essential support in the administration of elections, often preparing ballots, training election officials, and tabulating and certifying election results. And whereas even in the face of uncertainty and unprecedented challenges to election administration, especially over the past two years, our professional municipal clerks always display courage, flexibility, and dedication to the doctrine of free and fair elections. And whereas this Professional Municipal Clerks Appreciation Week, the City of Oshkosh joins all Wisconsinites in appreciating and thanking our professional municipal clerks for the important work they do. Now therefore, I, Lori Paul Mary, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby recognize the week of May 2nd through the 6th, 2022, as Professional Municipal Clerks Appreciation Week, and further extend appreciation to our city clerk, Jesse Balcom, her staff of Angie Juckel, Melissa Booth, and election data clerk Theresa C. Boucher, and to all municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent.
On behalf of the Clerk's Department, thank you, Mayor, City Council, city team members, and Oshkosh community. I'd like to express our appreciation for your recognition of municipal clerks around the state. It's an honor and pleasure to serve the City of Oshkosh alongside three very talented, dedicated, capable professionals. Angela, Missy, and Terry are extremely helpful, knowledgeable individuals who are wonderful to work with. Stop in and see us anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robby? It's my pleasure to share this proclamation. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Oshkosh. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it's in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Oshkosh to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association, be it now, now therefore I, Lori Paul Mary, do hereby designate the week May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is with great honor that I am here tonight representing all public works professionals to receive this proclamation from you. The field of public works is one that touches us each and every single day. Whether you walked, rode a bike, or rode in a vehicle today, whether it's the public works professionals that made that possible. If you went on the Internet, watched a show on the TV, or listened to the radio, it's the public works professionals that made that possible. If you turned on your water faucet and had water, or flushed your toilet and your waste went away, it's the public works professionals that made that possible. Public works is so much more than streets and sidewalks. It's water treatment, it's wastewater treatment, it's natural gas distribution, electric distribution, telecommunications, recycling, garbage collection, and so many other things that we take for granted every single day. Working together every day, your public works professionals are ready and resilient enough for any challenge. Thank you.
All right, we are at Citizen Statements to Council. Do we have anyone registered, Jesse?
No one has registered.
All right, we'll move to Consent Agenda. Take a motion and a second on consent.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on consent agenda? All right, please call the roll.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, we'll go into new ordinances. The first one is 22-192, Establish Street Grades, Pickard Estates, Phase Two, North 3,300 Block of West 9th Avenue. Staff recommends waiving the rules. Do we have a motion on waiving the rules? Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I move to waive the rules and adopt on the first reading.
Second.
Any discussion on waiving the rules? Please call the roll.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Paul Mary, oh, sorry, Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
And back to the Resolution 22-192, Establish Street Grades for Pickard Estates, Phase Two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, well, that will take us to Ordinance 22-193, Authorizing Public Construction for Pickard Estates, Phase Two, North 3,300 Block of West 9th Avenue, and Staff Recommends Waiving the Rules. Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I move to waive the rules and adopt on first reading.
Second.
Any discussion on waiving the rules? All right, please call the roll.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
And we will come back to Ordinance 22-193 for Authorization of Public Construction for Pickard Estates, Phase Two.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on authorizing public construction? Please call the roll.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
We have two pending ordinances this evening. 22-194, Approve Zone Change From Single Family Residential Five, District SR5, To Urban Mixed Use District UMU For Property Located At 2854 Fond du Lac Road. Plan Commission Recommends Approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on 22-192. Just a quick question for Mr. Lyons. What is the UMU? It seems a little far south into the rural area that we would go into urban mixed use. Can you bring that up?
The existing Game Time Bar and Grill, which is the property immediately north of Sardis Zone UMU, that UMU district is one of our districts we use for blending low-intensity commercial or retail with residential districts, so it actually suits well for that area. It's similar to like our MMU district where they both meet that similar need.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Please call the roll on 22-194.
Miller?
Here. Say aye. Oh, sorry, aye.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, now we move on to 22-195, Amend Section 1733 Of The City Of Oshkosh Municipal Code Pertaining To Public Nuisance Affecting Property Usage.
So moved. Second.
All right, discussion on 22-195. I just have a question, I guess, for City Attorney. So this is the one that had been used previously when there's kind of a, maybe a chronic property condition for nuisance abatement.
This is actually just cleanup for syncing up the requirements under Chapter 26 and 17 on tree limbs and things overhanging the sidewalk. We had two different standards, and so we're syncing them up.
I see, okay, thank you. Anyone else have questions or discussion? Please call the roll on 22-195.
Miller?
Aye.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, we are now at New Resolutions. 22-196, Initial Resolution Authorizing General Obligation Bonds Of The City Of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin, For The Public Purposes Of I Street Improvements In An Aggregate. One, Street Improvements In An Aggregate, Principal Amount Not To Exceed $13,805,000. Two, Buildings For The Housing Of Machinery And Equipment In An Aggregate, Principal Amount Not To Exceed $7,355,000. And Three, Parks And Public Browns In An Aggregate, Principal Amount Not To Exceed $465,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Would you like to have Mr. Taves come up from Ellers to discuss any part of this?
Russ, you want to take it?
If I may, Mayor?
Yes.
Just, we have three different types of funding for different projects that are going to be funded by bonds, and this first resolution is required by statute. So the total of all those three categories is $21,625,000. That's just the bond portion. The next resolution talks about notes and the utility debt, but this first resolution is just for the bond portion.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And just for clarity for those at home, this is actually a little bit different than we've done it in the past. We're giving you the authorization to choose the time and place to issue, to go to market, or previously we'd be here approving on a given night. You always had to limit it to Tuesday. This gives you guys still the, that's not this one?
No, this is, this is an initial resolution that's required by state statute for the bonds. We talked about what's called a parameter resolution. We used that last year, but this year we have a scheduled sales date.
Okay.
In June, the first meeting in June.
My apologies, thank you.
All right, any other questions on 22-196? Please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 22-197, Resolution Directing The Advertisement And Sale Of Not To Exceed $21,625,000 Aggregate Principal Amount Of General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds, Not To Exceed $9,140,000 Aggregate Principal Amount Of General Obligation Promissory Notes, Approximately $8,780,000 Aggregate Principal Amount Of Stormwater Utility Revenue Bonds, Approximately $8,615,000 Aggregate Principal Amount Of Water System Revenue Bonds, And Approximately $14,820,000 Aggregate Principal Amount Of Sewer System Revenue Bonds Of The City Of Oshkosh, Winnebago County, Wisconsin.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions on this resolution?
Russ, you want to clarify this one for us?
Sure. Basically, this is a combination of all the debt that we're looking for. So there's actually going to be five different series of debt being issued. Series A is for the bonds, Series B is for the notes, Series C is for stormwater, Series D is for water, and Series E is for sanitary sewer. We have the sales report that was part of the packet. What I also want to note is of the bonds that are being issued, $4.484,000 is actually for 2023 projects that we talked about two weeks ago.
4.4 million, right?
4.484, yes.
Okay, okay.
And on the notes, $2.8 million is for 2023 projects, and that's the direction from the council to roll that all together into one debt issuance. So we'll have, actually, when we come back to you on June 10th, will be all five types or instruments of debt.
Did I guilt you into coming in person?
Wait. Councilmember Ford?
That's okay, I yield to bill to do an instance. Yeah. Russ, do you, a teachable moment here. So we're taking out obligation bonds, general obligation bonds, and some revenue bonds here. Can you explain the difference between those two?
Sure. The general obligation bonds and notes are actually pledged to be paid by future tax levies, and part of that resolution, this body will be adopting a resolution that basically pledges the city to pay those debt in future years. So that, this is one of the rare cases where you can commit to future councils to do that because you are actually adopting a levy to repay the debt. But the stormwater and sanitary sewer revenue bonds are going to be paid for by utility revenue.
Okay, so the end user themselves paying?
Correct.
Thank you.
I just have a question on that commitment to being paid for by stormwater revenue. Just to make sure that does not preclude us from continuing the discussion at a later point on the lifeline rate, correct?
Well, the lifeline rate is actually part of the water.
Oh, sorry.
Department. So that, that would do that, and your water rates is a separate action.
Yes.
When we, when we issue debt, we work with Ellers, and they help us, and the bondholders want to know if we have enough revenue and coverage on that revenue. We look at existing debt, existing revenue, making sure that we can sustain, sustain and pay for that other. We have to have a multiplier effect, and Todd might be able to comment a little bit more on the coverage issue. I know a little bit about it, but Todd's really the expert on it.
Sure, so when you issue revenue bonds in the lengthy resolution you adopt, you coven in various things to bondholders, and as Mr. Van Gompel just said, each series of revenue bonds has what's called an additional bonds test or a coverage requirement. So in order to proceed with the issuance, we have to demonstrate that the net revenues of each respective utility, so basically your operating revenues less operating expenditures, plus you add back depreciation and interest earnings, that that is equal to and then above at a certain multiplier for each of the utilities. So for example, water is 1.20, stormwater is 1.20, and a sanitary sewer is 1.1. So to your question, Mayor, no, the issuance of the debt does not have any bearing on your ability to set rates, but you have to set rates sufficient to cover the debt if you want to continue to be able to fund the program. But there's otherwise no, no limitations on your rate-setting authority.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? All right, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 22-198, Approve Initial Resolution For Special Assessments For Utilities, Sidewalk, Grading, And Gravelling, Concrete Paving, Terrace Trees, And Street Lighting For Pickard Estates, Phase Two, North 3,300 Block Of West 9th Avenue, With Signed Waivers. Do we have a motion and a second on 22-198?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
And the...
Thanks for coming in person.
Resolution 22-199, Accept And Approve Waiver Of Special Assessment, Notices And Hearing In Connection With Improvements Pickard Estates, Phase Two, North 3,300 Block Of West 9th Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
New Resolution 22-200, Approve Final Resolution For Special Assessments For Utilities, Sidewalk, Grading, And Gravelling, Concrete Paving, Terrace Trees, And Street Lighting For Pickard Estates, Phase Two, North 3,300 Block Of West 9th Avenue, With Signed Waivers. Again, this is the approval of the final resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, 22-200. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 22-201, Approve Developers Agreement With Pickard Estates, Phase Two, North 3,300 Block Of West 9th Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the developers agreement. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, just real quick, I want to point out that all of this, these resolutions, this group is all dealing with that same development, Pickard Estates. We're just doing all the, you know, crossing our Ts and dotting our lowercase Js to get it done.
Yes, it does sound a bit repetitive, but each of these items do represent a different segment, so thank you for that. All right, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
And 22-202 is the approval of the final plat, known as Pickard Estates, Phase Two, North 3,300 Block Of West 9th Avenue. Plan Commission Recommends Approval.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on the approval of the final plat? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
And our last new resolution is 22-203, Approve Combination Class B License, Special Class B License, Taxi Cab Driver And Operator's License.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on 22-203? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Ojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried seven.
And we are at Council Discussion And Direction To City Manager And Future Agenda Items. The first future agenda item, Recommendation To Wisconsin DOT Regarding Jackson Oregon Street Bridge For June 14th. Mr. Robby?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is just a reminder that at the June 14th Common Council Meeting, Mr. Bill Bertrand from the Wisconsin Department Of Transportation will be here to answer any questions that the council may have, and that we will be looking for a resolution being passed that night, giving a recommendation to the Department Of Transportation on the preferred alternative for the Jackson Oregon Street Bridge project. Some upcoming meetings for that. Next Tuesday, the 17th, we'll be having a workshop after the Plan Commission Meeting with the Plan Commission Members. Then Thursday, the 19th, we'll be having a discussion at the Bicycle And Pedestrian Committee so that they can provide a recommendation to the Common Council on their preference. Then at the June 7th Plan Commission Meeting, the Plan Commission will be providing a recommendation to the Common Council on their preference as well. So there are several committees that will be getting presentations and providing the Common Council with their recommendations for this project.
Any questions or discussions? All right, thank you so much. And now we are at the Special Assessment Public Hearings. Might as well stay there for May 24th. Special Assessment Public Hearings coming up, and that covers what geography?
That would be all of our construction projects that have special assessments this year, so our street reconstruction projects, utility projects, so all of the projects will be having their public hearings all at the one meeting. As some of the council members who've been here a little longer may recall, we used to do this several meetings in a row, and, you know, kind of starting these last couple of years, we've combined it all into a single meeting and getting them all done at once. Public Works Department staff will be available to meet with any residents that have questions prior to the Common Council Meeting that night. Notices are going out. We will have a sign-up system in place so residents can sign up for a time slot that they know they will be able to come in, and our staff will be available to meet with them and answer any questions that they have.
But that does not cancel out the neighborhood meetings that are out in the neighborhoods impacted, correct? That's also in addition. I believe I got a copy from someone on Algoa Boulevard that there were some other impacted neighborhood meetings as well.
Well, and during the planning of construction projects, we have our annual Fall CIP Neighborhood Meeting, and we've been recording that in the media services studio as well and getting that out on the website. We've also been during planning stages, meeting with, for example, with Algoa, we example, with Algoa, we had some meetings with the Neighborhood Association during the planning of the project. We had numerous planning meetings with the university during the planning of the Algoa Street project. And then there are weekly construction progress meetings for all of our projects as well.
Okay, so we've already had, and just to be clear, because we've had a couple of calls on this, there's already been a Neighborhood Association meeting for some of these, but some are still yet to come?
No, we would have those meetings during the planning of projects while we're working on the design in the fall. So, you know, we had numerous meetings last fall with the university.
Okay.
And we had a few meetings that the Planning Services Division helped us engage that Neighborhood Association to get them information on that Algoa project as well.
So the next opportunity for any residents to speak to this would be for them to sign up ahead of that council meeting, ahead of that public hearing, correct?
If they have specific questions regarding their special assessment calculations or the projects themselves, they can meet with our staff, they can sign up to meet with our staff prior to that meeting, or if they have questions at any time, they can contact the Engineering Division office or talk with the project inspector out on site. And I would also like to add that we do have a email distribution list that interested parties can sign up for, and they will receive weekly construction progress updates and traffic impacts from our project managers in the Engineering Division on a weekly basis. And that is available on the Public Works webpage.
And so we have some newer council members. They may have gotten a first glance at this. Is there any way we can get a copy of the presentation we had last fall about some of the special assessment alternatives that we've been talking about?
So you're referring to the transportation alternatives for the special assessments? Yes, we had the presentation from Mr. Mazanik last fall, and we can certainly get that information from that presentation and send that all back out to all of the council if that's what you would like to see.
Yeah, there might be some value to that.
All right.
Yeah, I suspect at the 24th meeting, James and his staff have done a great job of meeting with residents about their individual, like a corner lot credit or something. That's not something that needs to go to the council. We should be able to take care of that. But I can assure you, based on recent years, people will be coming to talk to you about, implore you to do something about special assessments because of the larger issue, which is the bottom line assessment, which isn't something that James and his staff deal with, they deal with, making sure that it's correct according to our policy and things like that. So I wouldn't be surprised if we have a few folks here that are going to be imploring you to address the issue, and staff's still working on it with Mr. Mazanik.
Then it looks like we also have our housing workshop that same evening, but at 5:00 PM, ahead of council?
Yeah, Ms. Nyforth and her staff are preparing for that, and actually, I think they're meeting with a couple other boards and commissions as well, just to kind of brief it from that committee's specific charge. I know rental rehab is one of them next week. Isn't it next week, Kelly? Yeah, next week. So yeah, various committees will be taking a look at that eventually.
All right. And then July 6th, the budget workshop, 5:00 to 7:00. And July 12th, our strategic planning, 8:00 to 4:30. Do we have a location on strategic planning yet?
We will have it next week when Diane Tieran can give me the straight answer on that.
Well, we wish her well in her celebration this week.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, sorry. I even hit the button. I just want to make sure we're not confusing the issue, right? The 24th, that's about specific, we do that every year. That's about specific assessments. That's not designed to be a workshop where we talk about having a special assessment policy change. You are correct. I think that's important, so the public's not expecting that to be the focus of that meeting. That's not the focus of that meeting. And location, that's here, correct? That'll be right here. It'll be here. Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Last year, I think we did at the Convention Center to allow for social distancing the last couple of years.
Yeah.
I think it was two years ago, we were at the Convention Center. Last year, we had the hearings here, but we had the, my staff were available the night before at the Convention Center. So, but this year, we will have two rooms available here in City Hall, and like I said, we're using the same web sign-up calendar tool that Water Distribution uses for scheduling their appointments. So that residents can sign up, and they know that's when we're going to be available for them.
Do you know what website or webpage they would find that sign up on?
It's in all the letters that are going out to all the impacted property owners.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thanks for pointing that out, Councilmember Ford. All right. And we are at Councilmember Announcements and Statements. Report of Council Liaisons for Boards and Commissions. Councilmember Wojciechowski?
Thank you, Mayor. SAB had their meeting last week, last week, yeah. And we had students from UWO come to present their early drafts of kind of their research proposals that they've been doing related to sustainability, had a number of great proposals. If you didn't get a chance to watch them, I believe it should be on, it was recorded. So if you want to take a look at those, there were some great ideas. I know one of them specifically was about a sustainability manager, some type of position like that. And I know the committee is interested in looking into that further. So don't be surprised if something of that nature comes to the council. But yeah, there are a number of other great ones that we're probably going to be looking at as well.
All right. Other councilmembers regarding boards and commissions? I just, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Hanson.
I'd just like to note that a lot of boards and commissions are still looking for people to join. A lot of them have still empty seats. So if you are willing or would like to join a board or commission, please look at our website for open availability.
Yes, and I do appreciate those applications that have come in in the last few weeks. We're getting you some more public arts and traffic and DEI. So stay tuned, and thanks for that reminder. Also, I'd just like to bring up, we did have the Parks Advisory Board meeting on Monday evening, and I want to give the staff a lot of good feedback here on their production of the Oshkosh Parks Department Impact Report for 2021. Very well done. Just some highlights here. $393,000 in grants and donations received, 16,445 attended department events, 10,284 volunteer hours for a value of $293,531. This can be viewed online, I believe, on the Parks Department website. It's very well done, and find out what your parks is doing, parks are doing for you. And we are at City Manager, announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your packet, there's the current status of outstanding issues. I want to bring a couple to your attention. Facility studies, I'm going to be meeting with the representatives of SCH. That's the firm that's doing the fire department facility study. We'll be meeting with them next week, and I think at that point, we'll be able to begin scheduling the workshop on facility needs, which is going to have a high discussion about debt management and things like that because of the facility needs. Currently, staff is going through all of these facility studies that have been done and trying to get at least the most up-to-date number for today's market, because some of these, for example, the City Hall estimate was prepared in 2015. In construction years, that's worse than dog years right now. That's been so long, so that's a very dated number. And I'm asking staff to do that, and Mr. Urban and Mr. Van Gompo are meeting with staff to make sure that the numbers are more reflective of that. So I think when we be able to talk to you about this, we'll have a more 2022 appropriate version for you. Feed or replace special assessments, we talked about that a little bit. Mr. Robby met with Mr. Mazanik just yesterday to get a little update, and I think by, within the next, I think by the end of June, we should have something that's probably about 98% accurate. So I think that's what council has given us direction to do. And then I think we have to hit the road in terms of talking to various stakeholders, and there are going to be people on both sides of the issue. I think you know that, and they're going to be here next meeting as well, because they're going to be wanting to talk about it, even though the solution is a separate issue. Happy to answer any other questions you might have about any of the other items. Not sure if you do or not.
I guess, question on staffing shortages and impact services.
Oh, I was going to go through the rest of those.
Oh, okay.
But outstanding issues, that's okay. Thank you for, don't let me forget about that one.
Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor has a question.
Okay, yeah.
Well, it's tied to outstanding issues. There's at least one little segment on there, so I'll ask it. How are we coming along with bringing something forward to council regarding our COVID-related funds? I'm drawing a blank as to the acronym.
ARPA.
ARPA funds. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. How are we coming along in terms of bringing something to us to hear and...
I think by, before July 1, that would be my goal. I was supposed to add that to this list, and I apologize for that.
Please not on June 28th.
Very good. I'll make note of that. But, you know, whatever I do put together, I'll provide you, I'll want to provide it to you in advance, not just put in the agenda packet on a Friday. And that's going to take a lot more time to absorb than just over a weekend, especially if it's a nice summer weekend. You'll really be unhappy with me for that. But I will add that to the list, and I apologize for that. Okay, Memorial Day procession route, as you know, with Algoa, we've changed the route. It'll start at Oshkosh North High School, go down Smith to Vinland, Vinland to Murdoch, and over to Algoa to the traditional route, and it'll finish at Riverside Cemetery. I think we've been putting it out on Oshkosh Media, and I think the word is generally out, particularly among the veterans groups, that that's going on. I have a cooperative purchase for the sanitation division. That was through the state contract. And then, thank you, Madam Mayor, number 33 is staffing shortages and impact to services. You know, I regularly attend a meeting of the Chambers Governmental Affairs Committee, and one thing that we are sharing in common with our private sector partners is the struggle for finding staff. I can unfortunately report to you that, you know, we have about 550 full-time employees, plus or minus. We are down 31 employees right now. That is over 5% of our workforce. We have a vacancy rate that high. Now, on one hand, Mr. Van Gompo, when he gives you the report on 2021, we're going to be way under budget, but that's because we can't find people to fill the positions. But the demands are still there. And, you know, I think you've all experienced, you go into a restaurant and they apologize even before you sit down, that service may not be as sterling as you've gotten from that establishment. And I don't want to create too many excuses, but I want to advance, give advance apologies. You're going to see similar impacts on services, not because we're not willing to do it, but we are very short-staffed in several areas. I'll give you a couple full-time examples, and then as we're approaching the summer season. Our forestry division consists of seven people. You met our new forester a few weeks ago. Well, actually, he's our city forester, but he was promoted from within the ranks. That whole staff is seven people. We're down three. That's nearly 50% of our tree folks are out. What does that mean? We have this little problem called Emerald Ash Bore, and our folks are cutting down trees as best they can, but even Mr. Van Gompo and I recognize, even that staff can't do that. They're already, they're already overtaxed, and they're nearly 50% down. That's one example. I'm very pleased it's a very warm day. We've been missing those. But if it was winter, we would be 25% down for our snowplow crews. That's the vacancy rate right now. So why is it for these folks? There's a handful of positions in the city where we have direct competition with the private sector. Equipment operators are doing a lot of work out there for our contractors. Some of our street projects, you may see some of our former employees actually doing the work. Similarly, arborists, landscapers, those types of folks, the forester, they come from, they can have a part, they can have a job in the private or public sector. That's a real challenge. Finance, we're very fortunate. Russ has got his staff pretty well up. That is not the case. I was at a meeting last week amongst some of our League of Municipality members. There's probably about five communities comparable to us that need a finance director right now, and that doesn't include the other staff. Other places, finance is bad. We're in decent shape. We just had a graduating recruit class for FIRE. Five wonderful people getting added to our workforce. After the recruitment and after the whole class and everything, we're still down for firefighters. It's that, it's that difficult. So those are...
So are you saying that before the snow flies, we might need to consider a resolution to allow, like, snowmobiles because we may not have the snowplow? Is that what we're talking about? How bad is it?
The supply chain for snowmobiles is probably pretty bad, too. So I wouldn't go there.
Sled dogs?
Clearly, we are having those issues. But part of the salary study, I think, is intended to get us caught up with some of our private sector folks, particularly in the equipment area. We've done things, but that's going to be a challenge.
Mark, I think a lot of that's got to do with the CDL and everything, and the competitiveness for the CDL drivers.
Super competitive for CDLs. Yeah, it's not just, if you got a CDL, you have a marketable talent that, right now, we can't compete with. We've got to get our, that, it points to the, Mr. Fitzpatrick, no, I'm not going to let Mr. Fitzpatrick talk. I'm talking enough. But the salary study's got to get done. That's a huge part of it. I'm sorry, Fitz.
And Mark, I apologize, Mayor. I should have pushed my button, but can we do something temporarily with the CDL situation? It's critical everywhere. It's critical for us. It's, it's just, I mean, can we...
You asked, I tried. But Mr. Fitzpatrick, I think, is truly the appropriate person, because they have, the short answer is yes, we have been...
Okay, I'm going to put him on a time limit.
All right.
Mary, fair enough.
It's nice when staff laughs.
The answer is really no. There's not much we can do right now. The other thing that's a problem that City Manager Roloff didn't mention, he really hit them all except for our seasonal employees. So we rely heavily on a lot of part-timers, not only in parks, but in public works, too. So that's the other area where we're having difficulty, people at the lower pay range structures. So we're doing the best we possibly can right now. We have made some progress recently, but Mark hit all the appropriate areas. Fire, public works, parks, and our seasonals.
I agree 100% with both of you. But I mean, can we get creative on the CDL, maybe reach out and come up with a 20-hour schedule or something for some retirees with CDLs or things like that, where maybe they only want to work two or three days a week, or half-days, or something like that? Or am I, and again, I'm spitballing it here, but I know how bad things are.
Yeah, no, we are working on an alumni initiative to try to utilize some of our people that have worked for us in the past. That's one thing that we have been doing. We have modified our requirements for some of the technical jobs that require CDLs or other special certifications to allow those individuals to get those certifications as they can moving forward. So there's a time period where we have relaxed that certification, but it's still totally legal. So we've done some of those sorts of things, and we're trying to do everything we can to try to get as many people in as we can.
And I believe that, Fitz. I really do. I know you guys are asses at elbows trying to fill these positions, but I'm just, I don't have the answers, and I'm not, I'm not putting this on you guys. I'm just saying, let's be creative as possible. It's just, you go down Main Street, you go down any street, there's help-wanted signs. I mean, there is, there is enough work for everybody that wants one and then some, so.
Just one last thing, you know, we mentioned those pockets, those other areas that Mark mentioned that we're not having problems with. That is a positive, because I talk to other communities that are having problems across the board. You know, we've recently had different circumstances where we've had employees leave us but have asked to come back to. And I think that really speaks well to the managers and supervisors that work with those employees, their coworkers, and our organization, and the support that the council gives us. So it's not all doom and gloom, but it's challenging, for sure.
I guess I'd like to ask on the creative side of things, too, you know, are we looking at seriously any of the autonomous vehicles that do some of these things like snow removal and street sweeping and mowing and that, that are coming about with the new technology?
There's still a lot of experimentation with those. I'm not convinced we're there yet, but I'm not opposed to looking at those things. And that's, I think that's why our folks go to various conferences to take a look at what technology's out there. The use of technology is going to be a huge part of that. The other one is being creative on certain things. We're looking at, for example, within our public safety ranks, lateral transfers. If somebody's looking for a lateral move, in the past, you would come in and you would start at the bottom step. That's even if you have 10 years of experience. And that just isn't going to fly. So we've been working with our collective bargaining units to see if we can do things to get our, to allow lateral transfers. We just had one in FIRE, and the person is so pleased already. He's got a brother in another state that could also do a lateral transfer. So once we get it started, then it becomes more routine, but we haven't done that in a while. Chief Smith done the cadet program through the Technical College. That was, you know, it wasn't just done because of shortages. It was also done as a recruiting tool for women and minorities, and that's been successful in terms of attracting people. So we're open to the various ideas, and we're going to keep looking for them, because it just, frankly, we just have to do it as so many other businesses are dealing with.
And a lot of the departments have things built in to help mitigate some of these issues, like, for example, Mark mentioned Chief Smith. You know, we've had a very active auxiliary and also a relationship with UW Oshkosh for many years, where we have a CSO program. So it's a real popular feeder program for police, and consequently, we don't have those sorts of staffing issues in police that other communities are facing right now. And one last thing I just mentioned in regard to the salary study that Mark mentioned, one of the things that we did, because we've moved to the pay-for-performance model back in 2012, when Acts 10 and 32 came about, we've already infused an analysis of blending public and private sector pay, where a lot of communities have not even begun to look at that yet. So we've been doing that already for 10 years. And when we do the salary study, that component's already built into that process, and if we need to tweak the blend in order to accomplish what we need to do for recruitment purposes, I think that's something that's, something that can be applied.
So none of you guys are volunteering for CDLs? Lynn, you want to go get your